There we go, there we go. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Hopefully, everyone enjoyed their Memorial Day weekend and had occasion to remember the reason for that and to thank directly or indirectly those who have sacrificed. Freedom is not free. So, we are here at the May 28, 2019 Mayor's Commissioned Work Session. You have the agenda in front of you. I think we're going to have a revision of the agenda. Item number four will move up to accommodate one of our commissioners, who will remain So, Mr. Green, you're going to guide this discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Rick Green, Assistant City Administrator. I'm joined by Angela Van, our Planning and Zoning Administrator, Alex Hansen, our Comprehensive Planner, and Lynda Louie, my Planner with our Planning and Zoning Division. So, what I'd like to do today is talk about Mr. Jeff Green's plan for the Curry Park area. So, what I'd like to do is provide an overview, talk about our existing CMUD regulations that we have in place today very quickly, discuss the uses proposed by Mr. Green, talk about his phasing plan, then more importantly, have some discussion on some of the direction that we as staff need to move forward, if you would like us to move forward with these proposals. So, the location that we're talking about for Curry Park, the outline in red is the CMUD district, the Curry Mixed-Use District, located adjacent to Curry Park on the south at roughly 18th Street, on the north roughly 27th Street, Flagler Drive on the east, North Dixie Highway to the west. You have an existing La Fontana Apartments at the very northeast corner of the CMUD district and the Portofino condominium. Neil Kozakoff has built the 312 Northwood Project. He has another development on the Broward Block just to the south that went through an approval process a while ago. He may be gearing up to start that project, roughly 100 apartments similar to the 312 Northwood. We are negotiating, the CRA is negotiating, on the anchor site with Immacore, which is a mixed-use development consisting of 300 units, some Class A, some commercial office space, potentially a supermarket. And again, our goal has always been through the CMUD to link the anchor site with Curry Park and provide that pedestrian connection between the anchor site, as the name implies, on the west, and then Curry Park to the east. So, the CMUD district was approved on November 10 of 2014. The intent was to create a compact, pedestrian-oriented, predictable urban neighborhood that aids to the vitality for both Curry Park and the Northwood Business District. The ability to provide variances for building heights and add stories was prohibited as part of the CMUD regulations, and we established three types of sub-districts. The core district is where the larger buildings would be, which occupied the majority of the lots, particularly those fronting on Curry Park. We had a transition area to the south and northeast, and then we had an edge area at the very northwest corner of the site. And then, we had different types of buildings established, and these are just three of the many different options we had, but we had a tower building, a liner building, and a courtyard building. So, the way the CMUD was set up is that in the core sub-district, it was a base of eight stories. With incentives, you could get up to 15 stories or 195 feet. The transition sub-district had a base of six stories with incentives to go up to 12 stories or 160 feet. And then, the edge sub-district was approximately 10 stories or 135 feet. So, you see how these laid out. Again, the core district primarily those parcels fronting onto Curry Park. Height bonuses were offered from the base if conditions were met. So, if you did a LEED-certified building, you would get four additional floors. If you provided public parking for Curry Park, you got an additional three stories. If you did a grocer or a supermarket, you got three stories. And then, you see the green roofs, public open spaces, preserving building visitors, et cetera, got you four. So, you started with the base, and with incentives, you were allowed to increase your height. And then, more importantly, as part of our comprehensive plan, an analysis was done to determine that within the entire CMUD district, we could build 4,065 residential units and 2.3 million square feet of retail commercial within this area. And again, still providing that link between the anchor site and the Northwood Business District to Curry Park. So, the property you see in pink is generally the property owned by Mr. Green. It's probably about 60% to 70% of the entire CMUD district. He recently hired the architectural firm of Herzog and De Muren of Switzerland. They are one of the preeminent architectural firms in the world. They do work in Europe, the Americas in Asia. And they met with the north-end residents. There was a community meeting held on April 5, the Friday night, and there was probably attendance of about 200 people at that particular meeting where he presented kind of an overview of what you're seeing here. Herzog and De Muren have done some wonderful buildings throughout the world, and the proposal that they presented at the meeting on April 5 was a series of tall buildings, basically on the north and south edge of the properties of his holdings, again tapering down toward the middle, but anchored by 38-story towers on either end of the holdings. So, these are renderings of some of the work that Herzog and De Muren has done in the past in other areas and potentially representative of what could be done in the property adjacent to Curry Park. This is an aerial view of Mr. Green's holdings that you see outlined in red. You see a great amount of that space is currently vacant. Obviously, anybody who's been up there can see that most of that property is vacant today. With regard to building heights, so you see the Curry Holdings in the middle reflected in the red color. On the north end, as part of the Rybavich-related development, they have an approval today for 1,059 units in six towers. Those towers range in height from 25 to 30 stories. The first two towers have been approved, called the Marina, consisting of 399 units. In the downtown, south of Curry Park, you have Trump Plaza 1 and 2 at 32 stories. You have Mr. Green's One West Palm Project, the twin 30-story towers under construction today at 30 stories. The tent site is eligible for a height of 25 stories, and then you see some of the other prominent buildings downtown. So, again, with the holdings that Mr. Green has, he's showing in one of the renderings, which again, I know this is conceptual. It doesn't always match what we've seen in some of the other elements of his submittal, but anchored at 38 stories and again tapering down 32, 26, et cetera. One of the concepts that was reflected in the plan that he presented to the residents, again, was that connection to Northwood and the anchor site. So, what he is envisioning is consistent with the city's and the CRA's directive of maintaining a pedestrian connection, and he's proposing a series of shops along a corridor along Northwood Road that again would tie into the Curry Park plant. So, we were glad to see that element. Under the current zoning, again, as I mentioned earlier, you have base heights of 4, 6, 10, 12, and 15 stories. Under the proposal, you'd have the taller buildings at 38 stories reflected in the yellow. As you come inward toward that Northwood connection, you have 32 stories and then 26. So, you see that it tapers from the bookends, if you will, from the outside in. The phasing plan that Mr. Green suggested was the Phase 1 would consist of 210 residential units, a 32- and 26-story tower. Phase 2 would consist of 120 units, reflected in the blue. Phase 3, 345 units to the south, the 38-story anchor, and you have a 12- and a 4-story building. And then, lastly, Phase 4, in the purple, 330 units to the north, consisting just under 1 million square feet of gross area. So, total, you're looking at approximately 1,005 residential units, a gross square footage of nearly 3.6 million square feet. The commercial would be that commercial along the corridor. Again, I know this is very conceptual at this point. The ratio of residential square footage to commercial is at about 23.1, so heavily oriented toward a residential product. So, the discussion points that we'd like to have today certainly is that of the height. Again, the current zoning and land development regulations allow up to 15 stories with incentives. Secondly, it's the departure from the CMUD regulations that we have in place today, and then certainly if we address his holdings here, we have to address the areas in blue, which are properties he does not own, but still contained within the CMUD district. Thirdly, the unit sizes that were discussed at the public meeting consisted of units ranging from 1,500 square feet to 2,150 square feet. There was no reference to a workforce housing component, which we think would be instrumental. I think he would be amenable to possibly doing something. And again, if you look at the comprehensive plan numbers that were approved as part of the CMUD regulations, you see we had the 4,065 units. He's proposing 1,005, so that would leave a difference of 3,000 units for the rest of the area that he does not own. And then, on the commercial side, again, only 175,000 is proposed, leaving an additional 2,000 or 2 million square feet. But if you take just the gross square footage of the residential units that he's proposing, it averages about 3,500 square feet. So, it's a high number in terms of square footage per unit. Fourth, with the addition of the extra height that he is requesting, the 10-foot setback that was proposed, and again, I know this is very preliminary, very conceptual, but staff has a concern with the 10-foot setbacks. It seems like that would be fairly minimal, given the tall size, and if you're opening the area, which is the intent, to provide more open space, the 10-foot setback may be a bit minimal. And then, lastly, we're curious about the ground floor treatments, like we do with many of our downtown areas. We want to see pedestrian uses on the ground floor, have that connection to the street, to the sidewalk. Again, it's preliminary, so that probably is not flushed out. So, quick and dirty, that's kind of an overview. These are the five points that I kind of mentioned that we would like to have some discussion in some direction. My staff is here that worked on the CMUD regs a while back, so if you ask us to make any changes, they're the folks that will be working with us to make those changes. So, at this point, Mr. Mayor, we'll open it up to any comments or questions.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments? Commissioner Baduzy?
What's the current setback requirement? I guess it depends on how high the building is, correct?
Alex, talk into the mic.
So, with the highest 38 stories, what would the setback requirement be?
Depends on which street you are in. Depends on the building type. As Rick indicated, there's four, five, six building types in the CMUD district. You have towers, which is kind of the wedding cake approach. You have smaller setbacks at the base, so that there's street presence, and then the setbacks get larger as the building gets taller.
And Alex, we also identified primary and secondary streets, so it alters...
So, it depends on which street you're fronting, so there's no easy answer to that.
Okay, so, the proposed amount is 10 feet, though, for everything, setbacks? Is that what's being proposed?
Again, very conceptual, but that's what was presented, yes.
If I could follow up?
Yes.
Can you give me a range of what the setback would be required for the different areas? Just a range, rough. I mean, is it 12 feet? Is it 30 feet? You know?
Again, it just depends on where you're located. Like, the tower building would have interior side setback is zero. It's a minimum, no max. Rear setback would be, again, zero. Again, depends on where you're located, what street, and the tower part of it has to push setback additional 15 feet. So, the base technique would be zero, and then the tower has to push back additional 15 feet before it goes up.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mayor. First, a matter of housekeeping. Previously on this dais, I had to recuse myself from a vote due to my family member attending Mr. Green's school. I've had a legal opinion from our city ethics officer that there is no conflict, so just to put that on the record. Thank you for your presentation. I will first say that the neighbors are very excited about this. This is something that is much needed in the north end and very exciting for the residents there. I guess one of the challenges in developing CMUD, I'm sure, is that you were developing for an entire section, and we have a unique situation here where we have one landowner that owns a large section of that. So, I think a lot of what the neighbors saw during the presentation that Mr. Green gave is that the option he was presenting was more favorable than what the zoning was there, understanding that staff was planning for an area much bigger than this, but sectioning out this parcel. I think it showed that they have an appetite for the kind of density. I don't know what the number is. You know, I don't know what, according to keeping consistent with our plans, what that number should be, but I think one thing that was heard loud and clear is that they were a fan of the green space and really not afraid of having that kind of density. My question would be, in the development and developing phases, I think one of the important things for the neighbors is to get development soon, sooner rather than later. And understanding this is a big undertaking and that phasing has to happen, how do we ensure that we have a whole planned development by the time it's done and not just one building or two buildings? And understanding also that this is a business endeavor on the other side, is there any assurances that we can make sure that we're looking at a plan and getting that plan?
That's a tough answer. I mean, certainly, we would like to see a master plan, a very well-thought-out, comprehensive master plan. We could not force anybody to build, so the challenge would be, obviously, would build the first building and then see how that went, how the market went. There are a lot of factors outside of what we could control in here that would be difficult. But certainly, first and foremost, I think it would be beneficial for us to have a master plan to see how the entire area laid out. As I showed on the one slide earlier, too, we would also have to address the areas that are not owned by Mr. Green and how that would impact the city and Northwood and Curry Park area. So, I don't know if I can give you a good answer, Commissioner. I mean, certainly, the master plan would be first and foremost the requirement.
May I follow up?
Yes.
I think probably looking at, the question would more be if this development were planned... I know conceptual, we're not there yet, but say, development was generally accepted the way it is today. If another developer came in, say, you know, land was changed hands and wanted to change the plan, we have two buildings built and the property changes hands, how do we ensure that the first master plan that was agreed to is adhered to in that we don't end up having a building that is more amassing to the site? So, we lose the scale, which is what was agreed to in the first place, if in fact that's what gets agreed to.
Well, whatever was approved by the city commission in the form of a master plan, that would run with the property and not with the ownership. So, if a second owner were to come in and buy the property, they would still have to abide by whatever the commission adopted as part of the master plan. If they wanted to amend that, it certainly would go through the typical process of planning board and going back to the city commission for a major amendment, but the change in ownership wouldn't affect the master plan unless they came in and amended it in front of the commission.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rouse, did you have anything? Commissioners, Madam President?
Thank you, Mayor. On item number three, when you're talking about the unit sizes, and in a previous slide, you mentioned, was it, the average square footage was 3,000 square feet? I just want to make sure I understand.
Again, the whole concept is, if you look at total gross square footage, and that includes elevators, stairs, and the like, it's about 3.5 million square feet. So, when you divide that by the 1,005 units that were suggested, you know, you're looking at a total average square footage, again, with all the additional square footage of about 3,500, which seemed kind of high. And the concern was, again, we'd like to see a workforce product or a more affordable product embedded within the concept as well.
I see, yes. I agree. I think that, you know, I appreciate seeing 1,000 units go into this, and I especially appreciate, you know, the residential to commercial ratio presented, but I do think that implementing some workforce housing here would be appreciated.
Yeah, I think that the workforce housing is essential. We are struggling with the inventory of workforce housing throughout the city, and I think that as we are engaged in this conversation, we should see if we can get a workforce housing commitment there. All right, so these are the particular questions that you're asking.
Yes.
Let's take them one at a time. Is there any concern about the height? Number one, building heights, up to 38 stories. Anybody concerned about that? Yes?
If I could, I was also in attendance at the community workshop that Mr. Green held, and there was a number of, I would say, overwhelming support for the density there. And I think that while we're considering extra height, we need to consider what are the other amenities in workforce housing or extra green space that we're considering for that. But, you know, I think that the neighbors are definitely, the majority of them are in favor of that, is what I heard at that workshop.
Commissioner Rouse?
Yeah, I likewise was at the community meeting, and the neighbors are fully in support of Mr. Green at this point.
Okay. And obviously, that's all in context. I'm just trying to go down this list here and see if there are any strong... So, does staff have a direction? All right, so departure from CMUD regs and how's the remaining area to be treated? So, yes, Mr. Green certainly has a significant portion of this area, but the changes we make here would apply throughout the CMUD. So, are we, does that raise a concern at all? Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. I think this kind of goes back to our question one in looking at what Commissioner Lambert has said. You know, it's really about what are the incentives to get up to that place? Because while I think the neighbors are in support of density and certainly very much in support of having this type of development come in, if we look at it from a full scale, what could happen? What will be determined here will set a precedent for what could happen. And again, we want to make sure that everything is within context of where it's located. So, I think that's something that we should really look at, not only for CMUD, but looking at our other regulations, being that, again, this was a plan, I understand, looking at a much larger area than what we're just talking about for this particular development. But we spent a lot of time and effort creating these development regulations and then had a new and innovative plan come in. And I know it's a really difficult project from a planning perspective to say, what could I not think of that someone could come in and potentially propose? But I think it's something for us to keep in mind as we're looking at our other development regulations as well. So, you know, what is unique about this site that would cause for it to qualify for incentives? And how many other unique type sites do we have within that same district of what is the max that could happen, I think, is something that we should consider.
And one thing we could do, Commissioner and Mayor, is that we could have, like we have now with the CMUD regs, have a base height and then offer same incentives, but instead of incentivizing to 10, 12, and 15 stories, allow incentives that maybe go up to 38 or whatever height the commission seems comfortable. That way, we get some of the other elements that we would desire to see here, like a workforce housing product, and have a base, and to achieve that higher number, they have to provide the additional things that the city would like to see here.
Yes.
I know it's a little bit premature for that conversation, but when and if we get to that point, I think one of the amenities that we haven't talked about is mobility. And if we're increasing intensity, density here, I think that making sure that we have mobility options would be critical.
No, that's a very good point, because we'll still need to move people north-south. And it'll probably be jobs that wouldn't be in the downtown. So, that's a very good point. All right, so in terms of unit sizes, workforce housing component, I think I detected a consensus that we wanted to fold that into this. Am I misreading my commissioners? Okay. Yes, Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mayor. I think looking at workforce housing components are a good option to consider. I think we can look at how that might be implemented. There was a lot of neighborhood engagement done throughout this process, and I know a lot remains, and perhaps the way to get workforce housing may not be to concentrate it on development site, but perhaps to partner with the neighborhoods and have development partner with a Habitat for Humanity or Neighborhood Renaissance, some partnership that could create houses within the communities, dilapidated properties, or empty lots, where development could agree to do off-site workforce housing, which would in turn improve the neighborhood surrounding. I certainly think that there is an appetite still for onsite with, you know, many workers, et cetera, but to really give affordable housing options to families. You know, I think homeownership is really what the goal is, and perhaps there's a way to create better neighborhoods and surrounding as well as create, eliminate that need.
Okay. I mean, I think that's a very good point. With respect to the setback, I am also concerned about the minimum setback, because I really don't want the canyon effect along these streets. So, engage in some creative conversations with Mr. Green would be my recommendation. Commissioners, any thoughts on that? So, you agree then with kind of the creative conversation approach? Okay. And then, I don't think there's any question in number five. Yeah, we all want to see what the ground floor treatment looks like.
Yeah, the concern there is that the buildings aren't aligned with parking, and then you're walking past parking garages to go to Curry Park, and it's got some treatment.
All right. Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. I don't know if this is the point of time where we would bring this up, but I do want to make sure that in this conversation, that we're also bringing up minority women-owned businesses, local workforce that's built into this project, and that we're monitoring it, that we're requiring a certain level, and getting updates on that.
Yeah, well, that's also a very good point.
A few good points.
I don't know. Wow, wow. Yes, you do. You all have good points. Since we're giving away good points, yes, you get a good point. You get a good point. Okay, very good. So, Mr. Green, does this give you the guidance that's necessary to move forward?
Yes, certainly. There's a lot of work that we have to do, but I think it gives us some direction. The big issue, obviously, was the height, and I wanted to make sure that, again, even if we incentivize, that the commission was okay with the 38, because again, that's much larger than we even allow in our downtown today at 30 stories.
Yeah, I know. And then, also...
Go ahead, Alex, I'm sorry.
Just another point. A concern that staff had is some of those buildings that have been designated potentially for 38 stories are next to areas that have been identified for four stories or less. So, that is one of the considerations, how those heights work with some of the surrounding heights, some of which, again, are limited to three or four stories today. So, that was another consideration, because in existing regulations, the core, which is more in the center, is the area that has the higher stories. In this case, the edge of the land holdings are the ones that have the higher stories. So, you have higher stories right next to areas that today have very few floors and are proposed to have very few stories. So, that was one of the concerns, again, how you combine those height stories with areas that have, are low-scale today, and are proposed to be low-scale according to the current plans.
I have a question. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, I don't know that anybody sitting here today is ready to put their stamp of approval, say 38's the number, and ready to go. I think we kind of put that back over to staff to say, you tell us what's going to fit within context. I think that there has been an appetite, that's been known that density is okay within these areas. But again, it depends on what those incentives are, and I think you have a very good point that it's scale and context, and so we kind of put it back over to you to say, what are all those elements? Again, we're very early on in here. I don't think it's something that anybody here, and I'm not speaking for anybody but myself, but the general tone today has been that height is something that we're okay with. I don't know that 38's the number. I don't know what the number is, because a story is not a foot, as we know anyway. So, it really depends on what the overall height is, what the context is, et cetera. So, I think there's a much larger conversation that's needed beyond today to determine what that should look like.
And this will come back before...
Oh, absolutely.
...the commission?
Sure, absolutely.
Commissioner Rouse?
What's your concern?
How the 38 stories would work in the context of surrounding buildings that have no more than four stories. So, again, are those high buildings going to overwhelm the surrounding four-story buildings? That is the question. Typically, you try to have it a scale and context that is somewhat similar. In this case, again, that is why the existing regulations call for the core being the highest area as far as the number of stories, and then you start to scale down as you approach the surrounding areas. In this case, the approach is a little bit different. It's kind of a bookend approach with the higher buildings towards the edge and then the lower buildings towards the center. So, again, the question is the context of the surrounding parcels and the surrounding buildings, either existing or proposed.
Okay, all right. Did you want to respond to that?
I was just going to ask, so you're saying there's no step down? So, it would be highest part and then... I was just gonna ask, so you're saying there's no step down, so it would be highest part and then four stories?
Those areas where there's a proposal for 38 are, if you look at the plans that we have, the current plans, they call for four stories, six stories, or in some cases even less.
Okay. Commissioner?
Has the developer indicated a reason why it's done in the bookend style instead of that traditional, then, you know, higher at the center and tapering down toward the neighborhoods with lower heights? Have they indicated?
I think most of the conversation has been they want to leave a view quarter in that area from Northwood Road, incentivize to have the view that's still there. That's the conversations we've heard at some of the meetings. That's why the higher height is on the outside and they know what's coming in.
Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just clarify too, though, it seems as though some of the difference here is the amount of green space that will surround these properties, so you don't have buildings adjacent to other buildings, so that you lose some of that scale. So I'm thinking that's what's considered within this development as well, so you don't have a four-story building directly beside a larger density building. Is that correct?
The, it depends. We don't have the plans, and those four-story buildings today have to comply with actually lower setbacks. So they'll be very close to the street, so.
All right, listen, since this all got to come back before the commission anyway, I think what we're looking for today was guidance to staff as to how they move ahead with discussions with Mr. Green, the developer, who is in the audience, by the way. There he is. So do you have what you need and can we?
Yes, ma'am.
Keep this train rolling?
Absolutely.
Time is of the essence and I want to lose this opportunity. So hopefully, we can engage in those and get something sooner rather than later.
We will work up some options and bring them back to the commission for discussion.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. All right, now we'll get back to the regular program, the regular agenda. Micro mobility, when? Sorry.
Hi.
Wen.
Yes, Wen. Good morning.
Okay.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioner. Wen Deng, City Traffic Engineer. We're here to talk about last mile and micro mobility and regulations for shared active transportation. You know, our goal has, from the very beginning, as we discussed earlier, has always been how do we move people within our cities, not just cars? And with that, we have to redefine what is all these mobility options that we have today. You know, it's not about driving or biking anymore. There's so many options, such as e-scooters has been a trend, and I know Commissioner Shoff has an e-scooter. I've seen her around town. So, and as we see that the 60% of the trips in the U.S. is less than five miles, so here's an opportunity for us to transition into other mobility options as we navigate in, within our city. And each one of these mobility options has their own speed, so we have to talk about how do we manage and regulate these within the public's right of way. So as you may heard, this past year, e-scooters is really popular. Fort Lauderdale has it, Miami Beach has it. They're a lot of fun. It reminds you of a little kid playing in the streets. But there are, you know, there are serious data and how do regulations, how do we tackle this within our public's right of way? Last year alone, there's 84 million trips in 2018. That is shared active transportation. And with that, even though Bike Share has been around for quite some time, almost half of it is actually with e-scooters. And then when we look at the data, we look at how do people move around, and this is actually really, really exciting for us, because the majority or a lot of these trips are being taken during morning and afternoon peak hour. And half of them are people connecting from transit and how do people get to and from work? So this is really exciting for us as we're talking about active transportation, as we're talking about how do we get people out of their cars and get them excited to use the other options that we have. So with that, there are two things that we need to discuss today. One of it is the ordinance itself and how do we tackle regulations? So right now, we have a moratorium for shared mobilities from stopping them coming in, because we need time to develop these regulations. And as we've seen that other cities that does not have regulations, they come in, scooters are being dropped, and they're all over the right of way. So how do we regulate them? The first thing that we looked at is Florida statutes require us to regulate scooters and bike the same way. And that means bikes are not allowed to be on the sidewalks, and so we have to regulate scooters the same way. But then let's define some of the multi-path, multi-path options. We do have a lot of wide sidewalks in the city. You know, usually it's defined at eight feet, 10 feet, 12 feet, but within eight feet, that is, can be defined as a multi-use path. There are other regulations that we want to consider is there are going to be helmet requirements with, if you're using these active transportation opportunities. And then the no advertisements is really for these companies as they come in, as they want to operate within our streets. You know, we see that there are a lot of beverages advertisement around town, so we want to regulate that some. And then lastly is where do we park these opportunities? Where do we park our scooters, our bike and our segways? And there are many ways that we can define small vehicle parking. You know, any day when I'm leaving work in front of the library, I see all those bike racks are very, very utilized, 100% utilized. So what that means is that we need, we need more. We need to install a lot more bike racks. There are scooter racks that's being designed more, I guess that's the trend right now. But what's really interesting is that last year, when I was in Santa Monica, they have installed a lot of small bike racks and they're abundant, and that will help with a lot of these, you know, scooters being dropped everywhere. And lastly is like...
Wen, before we go, I'm sorry, who is the "they"? Is it the owner-operator of the scooters or is it the municipality that installs these racks?
Both. So in certain cities that they have invited these companies to operate within our streets, there's two ways that we can tackle it. One, we can actually create a CIP project to install bike racks within our city. Two, we actually have been approached by Connect West Palm Beach. They wanted to donate 100 bike racks into the city, so we have to find these locations to install them. And then lastly, we can set requirements for these operators, these companies to come in and install bike racks as part of their contract with us. And if you've ridden bikes, Bike Share or Scooter Share before, there's actually a geo-fencing opportunity on your phone that you cannot drop to anywhere. If not, then they're going to keep on charging you. So that's some of the regulations that we are considering. And then next steps is that once we have these regulations, that will be an ordinance that will be taken back to the city commission. The next step is how do we procure a citywide provider that will operate other mobility options within the cities? So when we're looking at this, we're proposing to issue an RFQ as we select provider to prevent, to rank three and select one, because management is everything. Other cities such as City of Fort Lauderdale has just recently has a permit program, and we've seen that they've been having a little bit of an issue, and that's their feedback to us, is that from a management situation, it was hard for them to manage. Of course, we're asking for a one-year probational period, performance period, and the contract is very standard with any of our other contracts, or three-year with two-one-year renewal. Some of the provisions within the contract that we're asking for is operational oversight. We are within hurricane season right now, so there should be some language in there that says, you know, you should pull your bikes back and pull these scooters back if they're, we're in hurricane watch. Other regulations that we've seen from other cities is that we, these providers are to provide a 24/7 hotline. So if anybody's stuck or hurt or is in need, that they can call and get response immediately. And I think one of the most important thing is we're asking for data sharing, and that's how we're going to use this information to help us make decisions on our roadway designs and how do we, you know, for example, where do we put our bike racks? We don't have that data right now. Right now, it's from a visual. So we have these trips and we know people, where people are interested in parking these shared mobility options, then we know where to install additional bike racks.
Wen, before you move off this slide, so we're looking for one provider to provide bikes, e-bikes, e-scooters?
Right.
Okay. That's what the RFQ will be going out looking for?
Yes, Mayor.
But it doesn't have to be the same company. Presumably, they can match up with?
A team, all right. We're looking for a team, because what we're afraid of is that because scooters are so popular right now, that they're only going to provide scooters, but we want different modes of transportation, different opportunities and options for everybody's ear. And I think what's really exciting is actually e-bikes. You know, have you, have you guys ever ridden e-bikes? They're so luxurious. But you know, it's, you're not sweating. I know Florida's very hot. You know, when you're at a stop sign, you can actually stop and like catch up speed and like, you know, continue on to your trip. So we definitely want all options within the city, and a team of providers will help us achieve that. And then part of our working group that we are, just to let everybody know, we're part of NACTO, which is the National Association for City Transportation Officials. And part of this working group is, these are some of the recommendations, that we really want to provide an equity program. We want to ensure that it's very similar to LADOT or something like that, where it's a voucher program back to the low-income neighborhood and as we help those, those are in need, get access to mobility options. The other piece to it is that there got to be a community engagement program with this. Working with Vision Zero, we need to educate people about helmet safety and where is the safe place for them to ride. And even if we give out free helmets, as we did 500 in this last community fair, I think these public information and community engagement is very important with this. And part of, you know, at the end of the day, like how do we fund it? And these providers have a lot of experience with other cities. And what we've seen in other cities is that they capture a dollar a ride within a limit, and that dollar goes into funding these other equity programs and back to our communities. And really, the next step for us, obviously, we're here to get feedback from all the commissioners and the mayor on if, you know, what we'd like to see in addition. But the next step is for us to take the ordinance itself into the final version into, for adoption. We have to issue the RFQ, and then we want to start developing capital improvement projects. It is budget season for all of us in engineering. How do we work with Connect West Palm Beach to get these 100 bike racks installed within the city? And this, and develop an equity program. And then lastly, I'd like to say we need to assign a staff, and because we have been reacting as this is a free market for a lot of these companies. They're multi-million dollars companies. And, you know, for us, we, we need to look at how we can look at not only trolley management, but micro mobility management within the city, because it's a new trend for us.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, is that?
Yeah, that's the last slide.
Okay, well, sometime the last slide says questions with a question mark. I didn't see that slide, so I was just curious. Didn't want to get ahead of myself. Thank you for the presentation. I think it was very good. Timing, how long will it take to come up with an RFQ? Go ahead.
Okay, so the ordinance and the RFQ has already been drafted. So we're working with Nancy and Law right now. Obviously, we're looking to spend a little more time getting feedback from each one of the commissioners and the mayor to see what we'd like to see. But at this point, we do have a draft that we're working on.
And what are your thoughts about a pilot program?
I think when we're doing a pilot program, we have to be prepared for success or failure. It's, that's part of the pilot. And the effort that is required for us to do a pilot versus issuing RFQ is the same amount of effort. You know, part of the recommendation here with the one-year probational performance period is indeed taken into consideration of the pilot program. If for any reason that this provider or this team of provider doesn't work, we still have two other ranked team that we can work with.
Commissioners? Commissioner Peduzzi?
I'm fairly new to this whole process, but I am the city's representative to the Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency. Do we work at all with them or are they involved? Do we have any sort of relationship when it comes to, to planning, you know, these, these alternate forms of mobility with the TPA?
Yes, I am also part of the Technical Advisory Committee for the Palm Beach TPA. We do, the next step for, for us is we typically do presentation to the Palm Beach TPA and their staff and these. But we typically work with them, for example, building out the bike network or developing a mobility strategies. They are not part of our working group here with micro mobility. We do have a very small working group with, you know, Rafael was part of our initial conversation. We sent staff to the City of Austin as we are part of NACTO themselves as part of that working group. So the city transportation working group is working with the City of Austin, City of Portland, all these cities that have experiences managing these mobility options. And they shared, you know, lessons learned and ideas with us. And from there, we capture all those feedback and we develop these regulations.
Madam President?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Wen, for the presentation. I appreciate it. And I am definitely an advocate for alternative modes of transportation, so I appreciate that we are bringing options forward while also being very cautious as to how we move forward on this, especially given the, I hate to say, volatile nature of some of the reports of some of these cities who have, have implemented this and just it gone awry. So I would definitely be in favor of docking stations or a designated area, the geo-fencing that you mentioned. I think that we've, you know, we have a lot of great things on the cusp here in West Palm Beach, and this is one element of it that will continue to help make our city great. But I, I think we just need to be very careful of whether it's, I don't know if I read this or if it was on your presentation. What was it called, like scooter litter or something that it's called, right? Isn't that a phrase? It's bike litter?
It is now.
I was just reading an article about this. And so I just, I think that that is something that West Palm Beach has, is just a beautiful landscape. And while I don't want to limit mobility, I, I would want to make sure we take that into consideration.
No, that's a very good point, because I've been in some other cities where you just see these scooters laying all around. The other thing I would say is I would like to make it very clear in RFQ that the provider will be responsible for the docking stations. I don't want the city to have to incur that liability. So they've got to figure out a way how to give us whatever the necessary docking stations are. And I don't know if we can require them to have a staff person who goes around and collects these things if they, they are violated, but, but I like the RFQ to be as specific as possible in terms of the policy makers' desire to keep our streets clean of the scooter litter. Is that what you call it? Yeah, the scooter litter.
Thank you. That's, that's a, that's a great comment.
Commissioner Riles?
Over the last six weeks, I had the opportunity to be in both San Francisco and Memphis, and both have the scooters, so we're kind of behind the eight ball. In both cities, there were, docking stations weren't used. They had mobile trucks that ran 24 hours a day in order to pick them up, so there was scooter litter. That's just, I think, based on the technology, something that occurs, because people will just drop them wherever they are and go into whatever they're doing and leave them and get another one when they, you know. So I do think that they are the new thing that we need to be doing. But in both places, they were allowed to be on sidewalks, and that was very problematic for pedestrians. And so we need to be very mindful of that, so that that does not occur here.
So if we had to map out timing, the ordinance, Mr. Green, will we get that before the commission?
I'd have to talk to staff, probably relatively quickly. We'd have to talk about it.
I'm just trying to figure out when we might be able to get RFQ on the street.
I-
Ballpark.
Speak for Frank. Probably in sixty days.
Yeah.
Yeah, less than sixty days.
Yeah.
After the resolution- after the ordinance is passed or including the passage?
Including the passing.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, Commissioners? Alright, now, let- let's proceed, uh, pace and see what we could put together. Again, very fine presentation. Thank you. Okay, Kevin, you wanna talk to us about the citywide lighting study? This is the actual study, right? Not a draft? Great. Okay, sorry.
Starting out well. Alright, that's a good omen.
Okay.
Okay, my name's Kevin Valbrek. I'm the Director of the Engineering Department. And I'm gonna talk to you today about the lighting study. I do wanna emphasize that this is not technically the final document, but we think we're very close. Uh, we had a draft document that was given us to us, uh, several months ago. And, uh, we looked at it again and, um, uh, reevaluated how the criteria was being measured and, um, uh, analyzed. And we've come up with the different, um, conclusions on the data since we've done this remeasurement of the data itself. So, what I wanna preface this, first of all, is, um, that the purpose of this analysis is to establish a set of investment evaluation criteria to prioritize how the city can allocate its funding for installing and/or upgrading street lighting. The analysis considers the criteria and elements that combined together provides an objective, data-driven approach to inform the city's lighting infrastructure, funding, and prioritization. Number one, it's for public safety. Vision Zero is the- is the, uh, mantra that we're marching to in that regard. And, uh, this falls within the- the parameters of the Vision Zero vision. Uh, basic principles, hard to see, hard to, you know, wanna walk anywhere when you can't see where you're going. So, uh, we wanna be able to enhance the citywide lighting levels. We definitely wanna establish some minimum illumination levels, uh, through an ordinance with the city. And then, we have an implementation plan that we want to, uh, further investigate so that we can utilize this data to, um, create, uh, an enhancement of the city's lighting throughout the city. The methodology and the results, um, basically, we took, um, uh, various categories, demographic criteria, population density, employment density, service area job density, household incomes, whether they have access to vehicles, uh, vulnerable street users, uh, there's crashes when dark, the crime rates, uh, the number of transit stops, the existing lighting in the- in the various areas, how many schools and how many parks. And if you refer to your packets here that I handed out to you, um, the, um, evaluation methodology and data sources is the table one. It's the first colored 11 by 17 and we can read through that later on. I- I don't wanna get too specific onto this, 'cause I don't wanna take up too much time on this. I could certainly, uh, meet with each of you individually and we can go through this more in depth. And, um, because it's kind of a complex study and there's- there's a number of questions you're probably gonna have in reading through it that, um, I think would be more suited to answer in a more individual format rather than to take up the length of time that it might take in this forum, so. The scoring results for the lighting, uh, criteria in- we put- it was put on a map. Uh, to show ranking the, uh, the various census tracts throughout the city. Um, and there's thirty-six tracts that were- were analyzed in this, in the revised update that we just got last week. And, um, you can see that they're ranked one through thirty-six on this. Uh, most of the areas where the safety issue was, um, uh, a factor, wa- wa- was the conclusion, are east of ninety-five. You can see where the reds and the oranges are. Um, and, um, that's what this conclusion, um, the conclusion of this study shows, uh, as of this moment, as far as where we need to focus our attention on. And, um, if you look at the, um, the other eleven by seventeen, which has just a tabular, uh, ranking of all the various tracts and you can see the various data, the- the- the numbers that were used and the scores that were associated with those from a one to a four, uh, depending on the, um, the scoring ranges that were listed on that previous table, whether, you know, what percentages gets a one and what percentages gets a two and a four. And so, um, you can see that there are, um, the highest score was a thirty-four and, uh, the lowest score was a thirteen. Uh, there's a number of, uh, of census tracts, um, that have, uh, above thirty, thirty or above. And, um, what we intend to do with this is to, um, fully vet the data again, make sure that we're good with this and finalize this report. And then, we're gonna- we're gonna dig deeper into each of these various tracts, starting at the first one and going down the list. And we're gonna look at what the existing lighting is in those areas and where we need to make some improvements to that if we do need to make those improvements. And then, we will look at how we can be able to do that. The other thing that's gonna come about from this report is, uh, we wanna establish minimum illumination levels for the city through the ordinance. Um, and we're looking at major arterials, other roadways, uh, sidewalks, shared use paths and- and the- the con- the Florida Department of Transportation context zones, uh, which are three to five, which is basically ra- um, rated upon, um, like, high-density areas. Uh, we use the reference standards from the ASHTO, uh, the Illumination Engineering Society and FDOT. And, um, again, develop a draft lighting ordinance that will be- will be presented to the commission to establish minimum lighting criteria for the city as a whole. Implementation strategies, as I- as I mentioned, we are gonna dig down into the various, uh, tracks that were rated high and look at what we have there and what we may need to do in order to improve the lighting in those particular tracks on a street-by-street basis. But in the short term, what we've done so far is, uh, like, for instance, on Alabama Avenue, we found that there was, uh, some issues there. And we ended up, um, uh, adding two light fixtures on existing poles on that street, which improved the- the, uh, the condition there pretty significantly. And in the downtown alleys, uh, uh, about a year and a half ago, we added some, um, some lights that actually, uh, faced the- the walls of the alleys to improve the lighting there for when people would walk down the alleys. And so, there was- it reduced the shadows that were on the alleys. So, we've utilized some of the money that we had to do some of those things. In the midterm, uh, what we currently have available, we have a one percent sales tax allotment. We have about two million dollars of that left. And again, evaluating the priority areas and, uh, looking at replacing fixtures on existing poles. Uh, that's a relatively inexpensive, uh, exercise that can, um, uh, provide, uh, uh, great benefits. Long-term, uh, we wanna look at what our capital improvement program will support as far as, uh, overall lighting improvements in the city and perhaps get some grants, uh, to help fund that as well. And then, of course, uh, the citywide maintenance program between the city and the FPNL is maintaining all of the city's streetlights that we have and making sure that they're all operational and working at their, uh, their best capacities. Um, I noticed that there's some people here from the Washington Road area and I wanted to speak a little bit about that because, um, I know that they've had some concerns about their street. Uh, we have a project that's going on right now on Washington Road where we're gonna actually do some underground utility replacements and some streetscape. And they have, um, uh, made some requests that we also provide some enhanced lighting in that area.
Kevin, before you move there-
Yes.
Let's go back, uh, a few sides, because I know we're doing this analysis. Uh, and the one thing I didn't see is where we're assigning a price tag. Yeah, I know we're raking them in terms of the needs and stuff, but I think part of the data that we need to have is policymakers, is what it's going to cost, uh, not only where the most dire needs are, uh, but what it's gonna cost to bring these up to whatever our minimum standards are. Uh, because, as I recall, we only have, what, two and a half million dollars available for all of the lighting throughout the city?
Currently, we do. We have a little less than two million dollars available.
Okay, so then, we need to, particularly as we're going into budget and looking at projects and priorities, we need to see what the dollars are gonna be required to- to- to rectify these situations. So, I don't know if that- if you're able to come up with that, but at some point in each of those districts, particularly the ones that are most red, it would be nice if we can have, uh, some sense as to the cost of- of bringing them up to- to code or whatever ordinance.
Okay, well, well, part of what we're gonna end up doing here is- is come up with how much money we need to invest. We don't have that- that figure right now.
Okay.
We will certainly have that.
At some point, I would like to have that. Okay.
Absolutely. That's very important data, absolutely.
It will be more than two million.
Well, I'm sure it will be. Uh, but- but I think we have to be very realistic and transparent, uh, about what it's gonna cost. Now, we can talk about Washington Road, um, see what-
Well, obviously, ideally, we would love to be able to improve the lighting throughout the entire city uh, based on the criteria that we're gonna be as- that's gonna be established based on this. You know, similar to what we do with pavement and everything. We wanna figure out what is it- what is our target? What do we wanna achieve? And then, we have to- to incrementally work towards achieving that. And that's what we're gonna be doing with this as well.
And I think as, and Commissioners, you know, we're gonna be going into some strategic planning in the next couple of weeks. And the- this is the kind of difficult decisions we, as the policymakers, have to work. Listen, on a grand scale, we could put in a strategic plan. We want public safety and improved lighting throughout our city. But there is a price tag that goes with that. And if we pay for that, what do we not pay for? So, this is a case in point of some of the tough calls that we have to make, uh, even as we start talking about our strategic plan going forward.
So, uh, if I may, I would just like-
Yeah, no, go ahead. I'm sorry. Please.
I would just like to talk a little bit about Washington Road. Um, just because we have the folks here that are in the audience, I'd like to address that, uh, briefly. And basically, what we're doing is we're doing this project on Washington Road right now with utilities and streetscape. Um, there's been some concern about the lighting that is on that particular stretch of Washington Road from Edgewood to Monceau. Uh, we looked at that and we looked at the, um, we did a photometric of the existing lighting there. And, um, we found that there are some areas there where the lighting level is low. Uh, however, um, when we look at other data, that's also in this particular study, when we look at the crime data, the crash data, you can see it. I've mapped here. There's been three, uh, reported crimes in that stretch of Washington Road in the last year. Uh, there was a burglary at a house. There was a larceny at somebody's property where somebody stole something from the property at some point and, um, or some type. And, uh, there was also a, uh, forced entry burglary at another residence down there on the south end. The ones that I showed here are the ones that occurred in the, uh, at nighttime. There was about eighteen crimes overall in the last five years. Uh, and I just wanted to show the ones that occurred, uh, during the nighttime. And I'm not a police officer, but I don't know what the relevance is between somebody breaking new house and what the street lighting level is or somebody stealing something from somebody's yard. But, um, in looking at the crime data and looking at the crash data, there was six crashes in the last year. Uh, four of those were at night. Two of those, one of them was an alcohol-related incident. Another one was a pothole-related incident due to a- a utility break. And then, the other two were on, basically, on this curve, um, that's between Royal Palm and Roosevelt. And there may have been a number of factors that may have, uh, contributed to that. But we, looking at this particularly, uh, this currently has a score of thirty-one. It's happened to come out ranked ninth in the overall study as it is right now. Technically, it's tied for sixth place because there's a number of tracts that have a thirty-one score. But, um, what we're thinking of doing here in the- in the short term is to, um, we wanna do a study and see if we actually change out the fixtures on the lights that are there from what are predominantly thirty watt metal halide fixtures to potentially fifty-five watt, uh, LED fixtures. And we can do that as a combination between FPNL and the city because some of the poles are FPNLs and some of them are the city's. And, uh, we can get FPNL to do that and then we just pay the difference in the energy bill. And our city crews can do the ones that are ours. And we can do that relatively inexpensively. But I wanna do a- I wanna have our, um, electrical engineer do a study on that and see what the lighting levels are gonna be, because we don't wanna create it where it gets to be too bright and then it becomes that, becomes another complaint problem. And we don't wanna do something that isn't gonna be satisfactory to the community. And we will certainly meet with the community group, uh, again in the near future and we can go over this more specifically about what we're gonna do. Um, there was a discussion or- or concern about potentially, uh, changing all the lights out to a different type. Um, I'm not gonna address that right now because that's, uh, another issue altogether. But just in looking at the lighting levels there, I think there's some short-term things we can do to possibly improve that. And I wanna make sure that if we do that, if we do go that- that, uh, direction, that we do it smartly and it will actually make a, um, a positive effect and it doesn't cause other problems.
Okay, that's all well and good. And what do they rank? Number s- six or nine?
Right now, they're ranked number nine.
Okay, so what do we tell the people who are one through eight that may have needs? And why aren't we addressing their needs?
We-
I mean, that- and that- maybe that's a rhetorical question, but it's a question that I- we, as policymakers, have to deal with. Uh, it's nice to address number nine, but now, I gotta, uh, what do- what do I tell the neighborhoods that are ranked one through eight? And what are we doing for them? Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I- I can answer that one because-
Okay.
I made the commitment that we would look at some of these hotspots around the city. Um, but when I made that commitment, it- it was in the context that we would do something that was impactful, yet not costly, okay? And so, um, we, you know, we've already done something on Alabama and two or three other streets where the neighbors have come in and said, "Hey, look, we have an ins-" you know, we have a situation. We looked at it from a standpoint, can we do something that's small, that would be impactful? And they're like quick hits, okay? So, we- we've been doing that elsewhere. So, I committed that we would look at this as well and if we could do something that would be inexpensive. Um, changing out bulbs, uh, is something that's not- not as expensive. And we'll continue to look at quick hits around the city is what our proposal was.
Well, that- that's all well and good and- and you don't have to answer me now, but at some point, if we're talking about what we're doing here on whatever's ranked number nine, then give me a list or give the Commissioners a list of what we've done in those neighborhoods that are ranked one through eight. Alright, because I don't want to start, Commissioners, we cannot run this city reacting to the squeakiest wheel. Otherwise, w- 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 we're gonna be chasing our tail. And so, if we're doing something for the neighborhood that's ranked number nine, and listen, I wish we could do it for all of them, then let's make sure that I- we- we are informed of whatever some of these quick hits were in neighborhoods ranked one through eight. Okay? Alright, Commissioners, Commissioner Riles, did you have a certain?
I- I- I think that, uh, Community Number Nine, um, illuminated an issue that we have in the city because it wasn't until they made, uh, a request to address their lighting that we ever came up with a ranking system. Am I right?
No, that's not true.
No, we've been working on this now for, uh, well over a year, so.
Well, the question then becomes, who determined the methodology?
The methodology was determined based on, uh, s- uh, industry standards of what you would normally look at for, uh, what would, uh, contribute to, uh, safety factors. Uh, and that's what the-
So, how do you determine vulnerable street users?
That depends on what type of people that don't have cars. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic and, um, uh, there's a number of other factors in there, but-
And so, there's data on that?
There is some discussion on that in the study itself that I provided you a copy of. And then, there's- we could also- we could also get further into that if you- when we could meet with you individually and go through the whole thing with you, so you could have a better understanding.
I never received a copy of a study, but at any rate, so, it, uh, as we got Community Number Nine, approximately based on the budget that we have now, how long will that take before they get their lighting?
I can't answer that question for you, 'cause I don't know what the extent of the lighting improvements we need to do. I can't answer that question for you because I don't know what the extent of the lighting improvements we need to do in track number one at this moment, so.
So, so we need to figure that out first?
Yes, we do.
All right.
And before we do anything on Washington Road, we're gonna look at what we need, what we're, what we're gonna need to do in the, the first track, and then go down that list, and we're gonna evaluate what needs to be done there specifically, and see what we can fund and do, and we'll just keep going down the list until we run out of money or out of time or whatever we.
So when we say we've done a lighting study, we've done a partial lighting study is what you're telling me, right?
Well, we've done a study that, that demonstrates what the, uh, safety issues are in a city, in the city. Um, I go back to the very first slide, really. The punchline is, is that, um, when streets have low illumination at night and visibility is limited, those streets' functions become diminished due to perceived or real safety issues. And the number of factors that were considered in, in, um, developing, um, the conclusions in this study as it stands right now, uh, dictate that, um, all of those things considered, track number one is the least safest area that needs to be the, uh, have the most attention right now. That's the priority area, and then it goes down the list from there. So it's not just lighting, lighting is what we wanna ultimately improve, but it is the number of other factors, people that walk to work, people in different industries, how much the income is, whether they have cars, whether there's parks, buses, what, all those factors, it's not just a matter of just strictly lighting, it's about what the people are doing in the city. And in order to in, in, uh, encourage walking down a street, we wanna make sure that we have lighting levels that will, um, uh, allow for that to take place where people can feel comfortable doing that. If there's not a lot of people walking on the street, then that gets factored into what the, what the, uh, uh, analysis provides. And so it's, it's, it's relatively complex, and I think it would probably be worthwhile if I sat down with each of you and went through this, uh, with our consultant that prepared the report, and we could explain this in, in.
If, if I may, uh, I, I have both number one and number nine in my district, okay? So, so we're gonna be positive and make sure that number one at least gets, uh, some lighting, and that we will look at the study, uh, to determine, and the budget, to determine when we're gonna get some in, uh, number nine so I can tell my constituents when they can expect some lighting.
Yes, we will.
But, but I think also, I, I'd like to see before we stroke the check for any of this, the list, and, and I don't know if you're doing a budget for the full two million that we have left, but I'd like to see a detailed list of what we're doing in each of these areas, price tag associated with it, um, so that we all know what's going on in all the districts that are affected uh, before any of those projects gets any money. I think that's only fair. Uh, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor, and Mayor, to your point, as, um, Kevin's point, I, I appreciate that we're looking at the city as a whole because I think that you brought up some great points. Lighting is not just about the lighting, but all of the safety issues, um, all of the walkability issues that we're facing in our city. Um, but I, I do wanna clarify something because I recall that this came up in this particular neighborhood and in section nine, and you, and you referenced it. It came up because we were doing some utility work on that road as well, and, and I appreciate that the residents and staff were looking at, okay, it, does it make sense to do this work at the same time so that we're efficient with our resources? And I just wanna clarify because I think we discussed this at a commission meeting, that you're saying the cost would not increase if we do this lighting at a different time rather than doing lighting upgrades at the same time?
No, I believe that if we wanted to go and do something with lighting in the future, uh, that, that we could do that with very little disruption to the work that we're, that we're gonna do anyways.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on, did you finish your presentation by the way?
I am done, sir.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you very.
I should, just what are the next steps? What, I mean, we've talked a lot about getting budget numbers and, but what are the next steps?
The next steps are, we're gonna go through and we're gonna really review this, find this latest version of the study, uh, and make sure that everything is good, we don't need to redo, recalculate, reanalyze something. I wanna make sure all the data is, is, uh, has been analyzed, uh, fully accurately. Once we get to that point, we're going to, um, as, the, the consultant is gonna work on preparing these, uh, the ordinances for the, uh, minimum illumination levels, and when then we will start looking at each of the various tracks based on the priorities that are, that are, um, uh, concluded, and, uh, see what the actual specific lighting needs are in those particular areas, and then come up with a, um, a comprehensive plan on how we're gonna address those on a, on a street-by-street basis. But that's gonna take a while. It's not gonna happen next week. It probably takes several months.
Okay, yeah, that, that, that was my question, uh, what's the timeframe?
I, I'd say probably, you know, it, it, we will start looking at this now. Um, and, um, I think it's probably gonna be another month or so before we come up with some ordinances for the lighting levels, and the, uh, in-depth analysis of the various areas is gonna probably take, like, it's gonna probably take six months.
So, so nine months we should be ready to go?
Theoretically, yes.
Can, can we do parallel tracks? Can we work on the ordinances while we're also looking at some of these quick hits?
Yes, definitely. I wanna get started looking at these quick hits right away. Uh, I'm just saying, before we ever get, come to a final conclusion, I'm willing to do, it's gonna be about that long, but we'll look at it right away, definitely.
Thank you.
We're not gonna sit on this for, for.
Thank you.
More than thirty minutes.
I know, 'cause some of these neighborhoods are in dire need of lighting, the sooner we can get there, the better. All right?
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, very fine report. Uh, number three, parking issues on Monceau. Commissioner Ross, you wanna tee this up?
Uh, yeah, uh, I have been contacted by a number of the residents regarding, uh, the parking on Monceau and the, um, Dixie, uh, corridor in, in terms of people who are working on Dixie, parking on the side streets. And we were trying to figure out, uh, because it's causing, uh, a number of problems, unintended issues that, that, uh, that need to be addressed. One is because of the number of cars that are on the street. The street cleaning machines can't come through, excuse me, can't come through, and, uh, they're clogging the drains, and there's flooding as a result of the parking issue. And the citizens have asked either that we have, uh, permit parking and/or, uh, one-sided parking that alternates in order to address that issue.
Hi, good morning.
When?
Um, uh, Mayor and Commissioner, good morning, Wendy. Um, yes, uh, we did look at this, um, closely, and, um, there's a few things that's, um, going on in this area. The street width is thirty feet, and when we looked at it, that we noticed that, um, adjacent to Dixie Highway itself, there are some parking that's so close to Dixie that's blocking the site triangle. So there are some short-term improvements that we can do there, um, such as signage, and it will need enforcement. The other thing, um, I do agree with you, um, you know, looking at par, um, par, time of day parking for garbage collection as we were, um, you know, we, we looked at that, that area. So we're, we're gonna work with Public Works to decide which day, I know we picked up two days a week, so we may alternate as we divide, um, that, um, strategy. The other thing is, uh, um, the neighborhood actually contacted us in reference to additional, uh, speed bumps along that area. Uh, we know that it crossed the train tracks, and we know that there are, um, a significant amount of, um, cut-through that goes through that area, so we're gonna address that at the same time. Um, from a, um, longer term, um, and I, I think there, it's more midterm improvement is that it's part of the, um, South Dixie, um, project with FDOT that the limit actually extends south of this all the way to Albemarle. And with that project, we're gonna, um, create on-street parking that will hopefully, um, accommodate some of these, um, demand for on-street parking. Um, so, uh, but as, in response to your, um, question about permit parking, and I know Scott and I has talked about this and the challenge that comes with permit parking, that we have to figure out a way, not only for enforcement, but it has to be a system in general. I used to live in a permit parking area, and when you have residents or a guest that's visiting, you have to call. There gotta be a system in place that they, um, you know, what kind of permit, how do you charge them? We used to pay a fee that's on our water bill, is it a one general area, or is it a whole district, or is it the whole city? And so some of those are policy decisions that will affect, um, this commission and, um, the mayor if we want to discuss that further. But I think, uh, if I can offer some short-term and midterm solution, the short-term is, um, let us install some, um, no parking signs in that area that would not block driveways and block access to the, um, the adjacent, um, businesses. The other thing is that we're gonna work with Parking Administration to, um, establish more and more frequent enforcement as we don't want them to block driveways. Um, and then lastly is, uh, we will, um, share with you the, um, preliminary strategy as how many parking spaces that we're, uh, looking to create along Dixie itself to hopefully shift and some of that demand onto Dixie as it is part of the, um, the midterm plan. And then, um, and then really time of day parking with Public Works is, um, a strategy that we can, um, come to you.
Ms. Rob, any further questions?
Um, yeah, uh, from what I understand, uh, the, the issues on Pershing, Avia, and, uh, Sunset are what caused the problems on Monceau, and so have you looked at those streets as well?
It would have to, yes, um, sir, it has to be, uh, part of a network. Um, and because part we know about parking is that you're gonna shift demand onto other streets, uh, you're, you're chasing it down the street essentially. So it would have to be a network as itself, um, and we develop a strategy as a zone, um, not so much as one particular, uh, particular streets, yes.
And would you be willing to meet with the residents to try to come up with a resolution to this?
Absolutely. Uh, once we have a draft, um, uh, strategy, we would meet with the resident before we come back to the city.
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I frequent a number of businesses that are along Dixie in this area, and parking is very limited. Uh, and some of these businesses, one I can think of has at least four businesses in a plaza. I feel like that is the size of these tables here, and there's maybe four parking spots. In those, in those instances, I see people who pull into that parking lot, can't find a spot, and then they circle around and park on the neighboring streets, and I understand they're public streets, um, and able to park there. Um, but I'm just wondering two questions. One is, were some of those situations grandfathered in when we didn't have a parking policy on the number of parking spots per business, or are they, um, operating out of code? And then the second question is, as we are looking at further development in, on the Dixie corridor, is that something that we can look at, which is, uh, shared parking spaces, shared parking lot, uh, some sort of public transportation, or, you know, trolley, or the free ride that helps this situation? Because I see a lot of great development along Dixie, and I, I know that a lot of residents and the business owners want that and want to be able to walk there and have these different options, but I just wanna to be sure that we're mitigating the parking and traffic issue on our neighborhood roads.
Sure, um, uh, and part of, when we look at a zone in this area, we don't just particular look at residential or the businesses, we're looking at employees' parking, and we want to study those behavior and interview them because, um, there are some opportunities, like you said, that for shared parking, um, across the street, but we have to create a safe way for them to get to those areas. Um, so we're gonna identify these opportunity zones to see how we can, um, share among each other. Uh, for example, in other areas, we know that, um, sometimes there's nighttime businesses, like restaurants, that's really popular, that we have identified other daytime businesses that we can, um, potentially work with these businesses, um, to create shared parking opportunities.
And, and the question about the current businesses, do you think, I mean, maybe it's.
I, I would defer to, uh, Rick Green, um, to answer that question.
Thank you.
Um, Commissioner, uh, usually most of those buildings, you are correct, those are grandfathered in, and at the time, the parking wasn't required for the use. So when a new structure comes in, let's say the Walgreens on, on Southern and Dixie, it's a brand-new building, a brand-new renovation, they are required to comply with the city's parking code, uh, same with the subway across the street. When a building does a renovation, we look at the non-conforming status. If it's a non-conforming building and they do modifications, less than fifty percent of the total value, they are not required to meet the existing code. But what my planners do do, um, is look at the plan and then try to recommend, um, to the property owner what landscaping and/or parking improvements can be made to maybe provide some additional parking. They're not necessarily obligated by code to meet the new standard, but if they have four spaces and we can redesign the improvement such that they can add another two and then provide some additional landscaping, that's always our goal. That typically happens through a minor amendment. But to your point, they are typically grandfathered in, if it's a brand-new development, uh, the carefree example, as an example, they would have to meet the new code.
Thank you.
Uh, one question I have, and I know that FDOT signed off on this road diet, and I think they're gonna start the engineering process, is what kind of thinking are we going? I know we, part of that includes more on-street parking, et cetera, but it just seems to me as, uh, uh, President Lambert, uh, mentioned, that there's a lot more commercial activity going on, on South Dixie now than perhaps even a couple of years ago. Uh, so what are we, wh- wh- will FDOT take into account the increased parking needs uh, that we're discussing here today as they're considering the layout of that street? 'Cause I don't think on-street parking is gonna satisfy the demand.
Yep.
I can answer that. Um, in fact, we've had a lot of discussions on this with the merchants and the homeowners down there. Um, we've had, and just in the last, uh, two weeks, we've had three or four meetings on, just on that area. Um, and what we've encouraged FDOT is to maximize the on-street parking um, in regard to, um, the improvements that are being done down there. So that's very important for, for the merchants as well as the neighborhoods that we maximize that. But in concert with that, in the stretch that we're talking about doing this project in, we've actually done a study that looked at shared parking opportunities. Uh, we've looked at, uh, modifying some of the side streets, uh, for instance, and, uh, where we've ended up looking at maybe doing two one-way pairs in lieu of having, you know, so that we can get maximized amount of parking, actually even on the side streets where, where necessary. Uh, we have a plan, and we're gonna be meeting with the merchants first, and then we were going to actually outreach to the community. You know, we need to have meetings with the, with the residents down there, uh, to, to talk about opportunities and make sure that we're, you know, working together with the community to try to fix some of these issues because it's, it's not a, it's, it's a hard issue. It's not something that's gonna be easily solved. But we think that there's some opportunities that, that, um, could benefit all of, all of us, um, in that regard, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Ross, did you have a?
Just briefly, you know, um, uh, the, the residents have told me that, uh, Table Twenty-Six, and I love Table Twenty-Six, it's a great restaurant. Um, their valet parking on the side streets, and that likewise is, uh, contributing to the already problematic situation that we have, and, and we need to figure that out as quickly as possible. And if they are out of code, then, you know, perhaps we need to deal with them as well.
Agreed. I'll answer that, that we do need to look at, um, some of these restaurants that are valet parking on city streets. Um, you know, you know, it may be a solution in certain areas, but other areas is causing issues, and we're gonna need to end up regulating that in, in a way, and we do have the ability, uh, to regulate a lot of that, you know, because they are, if they are valeting on city streets, we can regulate that, so.
Commissioner?
Thank you. I know that we'll be having future meetings with DOT and discussing the road, um, program on Dixie. But just another point that the residents brought up in this issue was when you pull out of the neighborhood and you try to make a left onto Dixie that you can't see because of the cars that are parked along the road, and, uh, more times than not, I make a right-hand turn even though I need to go left because of those cars there. So just ask that, when we're working with DOT on that, that we're looking at that, uh, resolution to that issue as well.
Yeah, absolutely, um, so there's two things, you're talking about the site triangle as you're turning a left. Um, there's two things that we have to do. One is within our street itself. We should not allow cars to park so close to Dixie itself all the way to the edge. And the, the other thing that, um, FDOT is, uh, part of their design is to look at the stopping site distance of the vehicle approaching and what that site triangle is. And those areas are to be free of, one is, um, landscaping and two, parked cars.
Right, thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments on this matter? All right. Any other questions, comments on this matter? Okay. Thank you very much. Wen. Um, just in terms of, uh, mayor's matters, uh, I just want to say that, uh, unfortunately, I got another one of those calls on Saturday morning, uh, where I had to, uh, go to, uh, greet, uh, comfort, uh, hug a family that had lost a, 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 a young one, uh, to senseless violence. Um, it wasn't a pleasant interaction, but it only heightens, uh, my desire to, uh, get the right team in place, uh, to take action. Uh, and if you may have read in the paper, this individual was no saint, uh, by any stretch of the imagination, but he was still someone's son, uh, someone's brother, uh, someone's uncle. And so, um, we'll, we'll continue to try to combat, uh, this problem of, uh, violent crime in, in our city. Uh, and, uh, while it may seem to be happening in a certain part of our city, it affects the entire city, uh, because, uh, we're not going to be able to track businesses and residents, uh, here to West Palm Beach as long as we continue to struggle with this. So we will, we will continue to wage the battle, but it was not a pleasant, uh, encounter. Yes, Commissioner?
And Mayor, I, I think to your point that, you know, you, we talked about that northwest neighborhood. I believe there was also an incident, uh, this weekend in the south end of town where someone was shot and transported, um, to the trauma center, um, as a trauma alert.
I didn't hear that one.
Yeah, I believe it was somewhere around the Carvel on Dixie. Um, so, you know, I, the other thing, I just, just, just to, just to, um, reiterate what, what you're talking about, um, you know, we look at the homicide rate of twenty-seven homicides in a year. Uh, but does that paint the full picture of what's going on in the city? We've got a trauma center right in our northwest, in the north neighborhood, um, that's doing an incredible job of saving lives.
Yeah.
And I would suggest to you, if we look at the actual numbers of shootings and stabbings in the city, that they are significantly higher. The trauma center's probably saving, you know, uh, four out of every five people that show up there. Uh, that's a lot of people getting shot and a lot of people getting stabbed in our city.
Yeah. Commissioners, anything else? If not, thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.